Hi, Joe. It's Stephanie Giacomo. We are adding everybody to the call. You are going to be on speakers. We get everybody added, okay? Thank you.
Hi, everybody.
I should have everybody.
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. One thing I have read about the way that we have to do this is that if it runs more than 15 minutes, every 15 minutes I have to do a roll call for the people that are in the conference. So just kind of keep your eyes on the clock and we'll be going from there. So with that, I'm going to call to order the emergency meeting, meeting of the city council Monday, 20, March 23rd, 8:00 AM. We do have a quorum. Corvich, color roll, please.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Stevens. Cox. Brown.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
Richard. Mayor.
Here. We have one, one item of business discussion and possible action to extend the order proclaiming existence of a civil emergency until April 14th, 2020. I will open that up for any discussion from the council first.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Brown.
I, first of all, the way this is working, let me make sure I got it down here. You can do the, like I was at a business yesterday with a call in cur side and the lady was saying how that's affecting her business. And I said, well, I don't know really what you can do for the safety, your people, your workers. Of course, I went through all that, but I'm wondering if, I know it's revenue being lost. That's probably why everybody's here. So reading this or looking at this, we're talking about starting from Washington DC, correct, all the way down to the governor down to us.
As far as emergency declarations, yes.
Okay, so I was looking, so. I guess basically, I just want to reiterate that and of course I'll just be quiet and let you listen. So thank you, Mayor.
Any Councilwoman Harrison?
All right. Thank you so much for putting on this emergency meeting. And also my business people are concerned, especially those that are in the, in fifth ward that are in the food service business. And they've, of course, gone to curbside and to go. But what I want to ask you is, or ask, places that don't serve food and it's less than 10 people, how will that be handled? Is there going to be any?
At this point, it'll be only what's on, on the ordinance or resolution.
Oh, okay.
The order.
On the order.
Confirmation.
All right. I know Congress, US Congress is working on hazardous duty pay for people that are in situations like that. Have we heard anything about that?
I haven't heard anything. I think that would be, that would come down to the state first.
And then it would follow through county and then city?
Yes.
All right. Now, what about places that, you know, where we'll say, for instance, like a stockyard, that type of thing where there have to be people there to sell their animals and it would be more than 10 people? Does this impact, does this order impact that?
Well, there's not an order on 10 people first.
Oh, there's not?
That's a, that's a recommendation.
Oh, that's a recommendation?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. The idea behind the order is to keep people from congregating in places.
Okay.
That's why with a restaurant, instead of dining in where there's people sitting around tables and eating, you can get curbside or delivery or, or pickup.
Okay. But as of today, there's still no dine-in until this decision is made. And the, the other thing is, how will this impact the schools at this time? We'll have to wait until schools start or is that something that we just have to wait and wait and see?
That's, we don't have any information on that. The schools will make their policy.
They'll make their own policy. Okay. Thank you. That's, that's all I have at the moment. Thank you for asking.
Yeah. Councilman Smith?
I was wondering, it seems like yesterday I saw that Governor Stitt had not recommended much of any of this. So I'm wondering if you could kind of go through and explain the rationale for why in our particular area, we need to do this?
Councilman, we're not much different than the entire state of Oklahoma. What we've been doing is we've been on a thread of all the city managers across the state, all the way from Oklahoma City, Tulsa, all the way down to the smaller communities. And if you look what they're doing to curb the spread of this virus, almost every community is following suit with what our, our order pertains to. Trying to, trying to limit social gathering and the spread of the virus. That's the only reason.
Give an insight on why the governor has not done this?
I was on a conference call with, with mayors from Oklahoma and Oklahoma City Mayor and the Tulsa Mayor and the Norman Mayor were, were the main speakers on it. And what, what they, what they said is essentially, you're no longer doing prevention, you're doing mitigation because it's, because it's not there now doesn't, it will be here. It's, it's going to get here. And where they are now is where we're going to be. And they said, they recommended highly that, that every city take those steps. As to why the governor hasn't done it, I personally think he's being derelict in his duty.
Thanks.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Could someone explain, I know the mitigation basically means that six feet distant, social distance distancing and also it means, I guess it's within that 14 day timeframe. Could somebody explain to the public and to us have, why they specifically said 14 days?
Who specifically said 14 days?
Well, I mean, it's, you know, it seems like everything is on a 14 day protocol or procedure to, to return to quote, the new norm.
Yeah. I, I can't tell you why anybody has done what they've done. I can only tell you why we do what we do.
All right. Well, could someone explain exactly what the mitigation is?
Mitigation means to lessen the impact.
All right. Is, are we talking about flattening the curve? Is there using that word?
Exactly.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Do, do any of the members on the call have anything they would like to say?
Mayor, this is Steve Cox. I do.
Okay.
Okay, on aisle number four. I've gotten, I've received several phone calls over the weekend from our small businesses. They're extremely concerned. But yes, literally, we had more people standing by Walmart and Lowe's than what we would have gathered up in some of our small businesses. I think that needs to be looked at and needs to be addressed. These are, these are tough times. I understand it. I understand what we're trying to do. But it seems like the small businesses are being unfairly targeted. Our large businesses can remain open and have no restrictions on them.
The one thing that, that I would just say to that is that they are, they are providing essential services as far as groceries and sanitizing items in both, in both the two places that you mentioned. But yes, I do, I do understand, I do understand the issue and there's, there's not a good answer.
I know, I know with this other locations like in Texas and places I know that even those businesses are restricting the number of individuals that can come into the store at a time.
And, and we, we may move to that at some point as well. That will be, that will be, once again, another decision by the council.
Well, this is, this is Councilman Pritchard. Why wouldn't we make that decision right now? I mean, if we're, if we're asking ourselves, what is the best policy the city can enact to stop the spread of the transmission of this virus that our community? Why would we not enact a policy that's broader than this? The attempts to limit person-to-person interaction and gatherings, not just in the, it's the businesses that we've already, the city manager's already included in his declaration, but a much broader set of businesses and activities. Why would we not do that now?
There isn't anything that would keep us from doing that now? Joe, Joe, are you on there, on here?
I am, Mr. Mayor.
Can, can you respond to Councilman Pritchard's question?
Yeah, I mean, basically, what's on the agenda today is to, to continue or to leave in place the city manager's declaration or proclamation. Obviously, you'll have additional meetings, but yes, you can, you can extend the order of the city manager and expand it if you wish.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor.
Councilman Smith.
So is there a reason to not do what, what Zach is suggesting? If small businesses limit their gatherings and also enforce some separation, is that any different than Wally World, being a Wally World, for example? In other words, is there a reason not?
This is a practical one of enforcement. But in one of the key arguments that you hear is that if McAllister is not restricting those things or trying to be more, you know, leave their, their businesses in place and there aren't any surrounding communities that people will actually come to McAllister because they can still eat in the restaurants and that will transmit the virus directly to McAllister. And so it's more of a public health reason to do it. But there's not an equal protection issue here, treating restaurants differently than you treat grocery stores. And remember, we're not talking about all small businesses. We're talking about specific small businesses that are listed in the, in the proclamation. They are mostly, you know, restaurants, bars, gymnasiums, those kind of things. But no, I understand and a lot of small businesses were already doing that where they said, no more than five people or no more than 10 people in the, in the, on the premises at a time. Well, this is, this is Councilman Pritchard again. I mean, I'm not necessarily advocating that we, you know, allow the businesses to have been shut to reopen. Although I, I do think regardless of whether, what decision we make or not, we should amend the resolution or proclamation to, to enact social distancing in places that do stay open. So, you know, really I'm thinking grocery stores, potentially other central retail stores. But I'm concerned that, you know, especially on the food side of this, we've closed restaurants or, you know, limited restaurants to take out and curb that only, which is actually probably going to increase the demand on grocery stores. And so we've actually, I think, created a scenario where more people are going to be in the same area. And it seems only responsible to me to say, well, okay, we can have a certain density of people in this store. And when people are in the store, particularly maybe lining up, you know, to check out or to get into the store, they need to be spaced so far apart. Now, we can talk about enforcement of that. I don't actually know how we plan to enforce any of this. But I think if we don't start with the right policy, you know, while we're taking action, which is, which is honorable here to stop the spread of this, we actually are running the risk of not doing very much good to public health while causing significant hardship to the local economy. Councilman Pritchard, this is Joe Urban again. I just wanted to say one, one other thing is that, you know, one of the things we're also trying to manage is, is panic. And so when, when people are denied essential services, there's much more likelihood of disturbances of the peace and those kinds of things. So I think, you know, do a layered approach. Obviously, you can enact additional policy. You've got, I think you've got a council meeting coming up Tuesday night. We might revisit that, but I, I, you know, I just encourage you to take kind of a measured approach here so we don't create any kind of public, you know, unrest or panic.
And what's the measured approach?
If I may, this is Councilman Stevens. I want to kind of reiterate a few things and say a few things if I may.
Go ahead.
I'm going to have to echo what Councilman Pritchard said. I, I think that, you know, saying something's fair or unfair at this point is, is a moot point in a lot of ways because it doesn't make any sense to say what's fair and not fair at this point. I wish none of us were having to go through the decisions we're all having to make for our families and businesses right now, but for the wellness of the public, we're having to make hard decisions. I understand that. But it seems like to me that we need to do a policy in place that, that helps provide essential services to our community, takes care of our citizens right now, and especially those most vulnerable. But also at the same time, keeping in mind that, that, you know, after this passes, we're still going to have people and families here because we're not really talking about businesses here. We're talking about people and families and how we best protect them and how we help, you know, go through this process. So I think it would be really good for us as we look and we talk through this some more to actually keep in mind a measured approach for all the community. Because I don't see that it makes, I don't see that it makes sense to me to funnel people to other areas, maybe even causing more density, which the CDC has already been against a lot of. We've canceled events, we've shut down City Hall, we've shut down the Expo Center. I mean, we're doing things here at the city level to help mitigate that spread as best we can. So I think we need to look at this as kind of a holistic approach of how do we best encourage our citizens to maintain that isolation and mitigate that approach. But especially as we go forward, I mean, everything that I've read and read and saw is that we're just getting started and it seemed like that's the case in Oklahoma because the reality of it is that the virus that we're talking about, it's not a matter of, oh, when it gets here, it's already here. We just haven't got a confirmed case of it yet. So I think as we go forward and we talk through these things, we need to be very wise in how we talk and we structure things to not instill an extra panic or fear because I don't want to do that. But we need to make sure that we're talking about protecting our citizens and protecting our community in the best way possible because we have a health facility here that I think is going to be kind of a beacon for the spark of the state. But that's also going to bring a lot more sick people here. And I'm not saying, you know, we don't want to help people. I'm just saying that we need to be wise in how we're structuring all this because as I was watching the governor's address yesterday, we got that, the mobile testing lab, which is wonderful. But at the same time, we're going to park that by the city in McAllister. And I imagine we're going to have a lot of people come here for that and a lot of their families that may be symptomatic or asymptomatic that still carry this virus and we don't know because that's the, that's the real issue here is, is transmission. So how we take and approach this matter and how we do this, I'm not against what we're doing right now. It's just it needs to be thoughtfully done in a way that actually creates health trust and protection.
Okay, we're, we're at 15 minutes in, so I've got to do a quick roll call. Councilman, Councilman Stevens?
Here.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Cox?
Here.
Yeah. And Joe, you're still there?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Did you ask Councilman Smith?
He is here. He's present. Yeah. The, the other, the other three members are present in the chambers. Well, the one thing, the one thing that I would say to what you guys are just discussing is, I, I'm not against doing that, but I don't think that we can do it today because we need to come up with some kind of, some kind of formula. I mean, what did, what, you can't tell Walmart they're going to have 10 people in a, you know, multi-hundred thousand square foot building. There'd have to be some kind of a density, density that would, that would have to come up. And, and Joe, tell me, tell me if I'm wrong, would we, would we be able to do this as new business on the meeting tomorrow night?
You can, you can take it home as a new business item. I think under these, under these circumstances, you can either do it as an emergency item or as a new business item. So I was, you know, I encourage you guys to put some thought into it. I mean, it's going to be, it's going to need to have some specificity. I mean, saying no interim dining is, is pretty straightforward. Saying, you know, coming up with a formula for what you're going to allow or what you're going to expect the businesses to, of course, is a different matter. So.
Joe, that's.
This is Councilman Pritchard. Do you want to say something again?
Yes, go ahead.
Have there been discussions with the county about enacting this countywide?
Councilman Pritchard, the county is in conversation with all of emergency management and that level two that we're proceeding to today in the fight of this virus. The county, those are county decisions. We have let them know exactly what we're doing from the city standpoint. So we have passed all of that information on to them and they will be making their own decisions moving forward. I know they have a meeting scheduled this morning. I have not seen that agenda, but I'm sure that those are conversations that are coming in the near future.
I mean, I think there's a lot of value in, especially from McAllister's being sort of the, the regional, or at least county, kind of, or county seat. I think there's a lot of value in having the same policy across the entire county. I don't know if that's something they're interested in, but it's, it's definitely a discussion that is worth having with the county. I don't know who, is that a, who is it? Who is that card? Do we have a liaison between the county and the city manager or how's that work?
Yes, it'd be the city manager.
Commissioner, Councilman Commissioner Solomon is part of the emergency management team. We have a district-wide meeting today at 2:00. That is a meeting that is for emergency responders and the cities and counties as we discuss how we proceed into the different levels moving forward. So I will continue to have that communication with Commissioner Solomon.
I have another question, city manager.
Yes.
You may have already addressed this. I may have missed it. But the, like the senior nutrition, or maybe it's just the nutrition, but I think a lot of seniors take advantage of it at the Stipe Center. Maybe there's another location across town. Is, what are we doing with that? Is there anything, is that program still functioning? How's that going?
That program is functioning. We've shut down the senior nutrition program for, for dining at the Stipe Center and also the Kiowa Center. Prior to our, our enactment of this order, we had asked all of the seniors that participated in that lunch every day onsite to provide us their cell phone number, their phone number. They, the bulk of all of them signed up and we are doing home deliveries for them. So we've just transitioned to a home delivery service.
Are there any others? Go ahead.
The nutrition code for the seniors on the home delivery, is that something that, like, can we expand that? Does the city have the capacity to make that program broader in time of this to reach potentially more at-risk populations?
Councilman, we're limited on the amount of food that is delivered to the center. I, I can certainly look into that and see if we can expand it. But right now I know that based on our projections for years is how we receive that allotment of food. So we, we'll definitely look into it and if we can expand it, we will.
I mean, I think something that we should be thinking about too is, and the nutrition program we're having is a great way to do that, but, you know, thinking about the at-risk populations in our community and what, if anything, we as a city government can do to reach those people and, you know, make it easier for them to, I mean, for them to keep a safe distance from people. And certainly, you know, food is a critical component of that. I mean, I, I personally fall in an at-risk category. So I've been self-guaranteed myself. But, you know, I've been preparing. I have family that's been helpful. And I know especially for some seniors, which are definitely in the at-risk category, that's the most difficult thing. So when we as a community, when we as a city are thinking about how to stop the spread of this virus and lessen its impact, I mean, certainly creating distance in public is important, but if we can as much as possible with our limited resources, think about a holistic approach of this, I think we're most likely to be successful.
Any other, any other comments from the council before I open it up to the public?
Councilman Brown, I have a couple more comments and then I'd like to make an amendment if I could, please. I think as we go forward, Councilman Pritchard's comments really echo, I think, a lot of what we should do, what we should see in, in trying to educate, prepare for the community and make informed decisions. Because like I said, we're dealing with people. We're not dealing with just, if we think this is just a money issue or a business issue, we're wrong. It's about people and those businesses are, are people that we need to keep in mind how we can best protect those, like he's talking about, they're most at risk and how we can help mitigate it from our perspective as well. And I, and I want to applaud the city for some of the efforts it's taking. But I'd also like to, to talk about a little bit that during these times in this crisis, we need to be thinking about how we can best alleviate pressure off of our citizens and the businesses. So as going forward and talking about this and, and thinking all these, through these things, I think we need to really be start looking at some of our structures and fees right now. As much as I hate to do this with the budget that we have, that maybe we ought to let those citizens retain more in their pockets right now for the sake of their families and the sake of stormwater fee and different fees and things and thoughts like that. So I want to throw that out there. But I'd also like to make an amendment to what we're talking about, depending on what goes forward with this vote. If we're going to vote on approving this today, I'd like to limit it to either tonight, tomorrow evening's council meeting, so we can come up with a better, more holistic approach. Or I'd like to limit it further down than what we've been discussing. Not because I'm not for this, to be very clear, but because I think that there's such a rapidly changing environment with all of this and information coming out daily that we might enact something today that needs to be changed tomorrow. So those are just my thoughts. I wanted to share those as well.
Well, this is Joe Urban again. I think having an expiration date in the, in the order is, is completely appropriate. And obviously, you can order it as, you know, a prospective or until further action of the, of the council. One of the things I was also going to mention, Councilman Stevens, is there is economic development money. That money is earmarked for the recruitment of new businesses, but also for the protection and redemption of existing businesses. And that's another tool that the council has available to them. Absolutely. A bunch of processes going forward. Some of these folks are going to be harmed by these closures. Absolutely. And that's, if I may, Mayor.
Go ahead.
That, that's kind of what I've been thinking. I know there's going to be some level of help from the federal government, but the reality of the situation is here, and we've talked about this before. You know, I hope the, the state, the federal level does everything they can to help us here. But the reality of it is, is that we need to depend on ourselves. And the only way our community is going to get through this is going to be sacrificed by all of us, not just a select few, but by all of us in supporting and holding each other up. Because I know after this is done and hopefully we've made good thoughtful decisions to help mitigate this and protect the public, that we're going to have to pick up the pieces in more than one way. And, and I pray that we do a good job of that. But I think it's something that we need to be thinking about, not only in protection of the public's health, but how are we going to set our community and our citizens up to succeed after this and through this? So I, I don't know what the rest of the council's thoughts are on limiting this extension and how we need to go forward. So I'd like to open that back up for discussion. I'll be quiet for a second.
This is Councilman Cox. And I concur with everything that's been said. I think we need the order. I think it needs an amendment. It needs an expiration until we can come together and make it in, in a form that limits exposure to the most and the largest amount of people at a given time.
This is Joe Urban again. What you might do is you might put an expiration date of the order for the first regular meeting in the month of April or unless sooner acted upon by the council. That way you could, you could terminate it anytime you have something you want to put in place.
Yeah, we, we currently have it running through April 4th, 2020, which is the first meeting in April, April 14th, I'm sorry, 2020.
You might kind of add that language though, that or unless, or, or until further action of the council. Does that make you do it sooner?
Okay. So we could, we could tomorrow evening do a, do a new business item to amend the, assuming this were to pass today, to amend what we do today to include some of the things that Councilman Pritchard and Vice Mayor Stevens are discussing.
Sure. Or you could, or you could, you know, there's, I'm assuming for a special meeting or something like that, if you need to act sooner than the next regular council meeting. But if you don't have something ready to go, or you could.
Okay.
So if, if I may, just for clarity, so are, are we talking about amending the order to be discussed?
Amending the order to be discussed tomorrow evening as well in the council?
No, no, no. What we're talking about is, you know, new business is any item that couldn't have been foreseen prior to posting of the agenda. So we obviously didn't know we were going to be in this shape prior to posting the agenda, so we can address it under new business. To uh to amend or to act any, you know, uh to to whatever we deem necessary to uh under the law.
And I would, I would encourage you guys to amend the agenda that is already posted and add that new business item now. Um, we're still technically according to open meetings. If you close to twenty-four hours before the meeting, that's that's sufficient. You know, we post. A week before because of our ordinance uh restrictions, but you're still in compliance with open meetings. If you even amended that, it is a regular um discussion item or a discussion action. Well, I would for sure put it on there as a new business. This is Councilman Pritchard. While we're talking about amending the agenda for tomorrow.
Yes.
Can we amend the agenda also to allow students to conference call again for the video conference or something?
Yes, yeah, we're definitely, yeah.
I like you guys keeping our distance.
Good. I gotta, I gotta do the, gotta do the roll call again. So uh, Vice Mayor Stevens. Yes, uh, Councilman Cox. Councilman Cox, uh, Councilman Pritchard. Councilman Pritchard. I I'm having to do that roll call again. Have to do it every fifteen. Okay, great. Okay, and the uh, any others? Councilwoman Harrison?
Just for complete clarity on this amendment, I have no problem with that because it does make sense. We would have to to uh vote on amending it today in order for it to be new business tomorrow. They, oh, how?
No, no, no.
Could we get clarification, please? Oh, no vote is required. We can just go ahead and make it as a new.
Yeah, it would be, it would be listed under new business when we, when we post the.
All right, and today basically would just be a discussion. Is this what we're saying?
No.
No, we still would have.
This is, that today is 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 discussion of possible action on extending the uh the order that the city manager put out.
Okay.
If it, if we do that and nothing else, then tomorrow at the at the regular scheduled meeting. Under the uh new business, we would take up amending this to uh. To include some of the things.
Some of the things we're discussing. Now, uh, just to make sure that I understand it, we can ex- uh expand the city manager's. Order or does it just have to be uh city council now on this uh order expansion?
We have, we, we have to do it. The city manager can only do it for forty-eight hours.
That's within your authority, correct? All right. I've got a couple of uh questions now. Um. McAllister is the hub of of Pittsburgh County. What are the other mayors and council in other our sisters uh communities? What are, what are they doing or have they done anything pursuant to what we're planning on doing or not doing?
And I do know Krebs called a special meeting uh over the weekend and they they discussed it and I believe they're having another special meeting today.
Okay.
To uh to discuss it.
Because we have uh people that work in Krebs and people that, you know, and vice versa. We have people that uh come from uh. Surrounding communities that work here or we have people that work there. So it seems to me that we're going to have to do something that's going to be uniform for Pittsburgh County, and that's when the county commission.
Once again, that's that's all all we can control is what's.
That's what we're doing here. All right, thank you.
Councilman Brown?
I wonder, I guess I can ask the city manager, what is the amount of the economic development money? Is there about, what's about fund balance?
About one point three million dollars that's available.
Okay, okay.
Point two, one point three, somewhere like that.
Uh, uh, just to be clear, some of that is specifically military, correct?
That is minus the military grammar.
Okay.
So the one point three you said is?
One point two, one point three, somewhere like that area. I'll have that exact figure for you tomorrow night.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mayor.
Who would be the uh determinate, uh, who would be the one to file for this economic uh development money? Would it be?
At, well, at this point, it would be, there's no programs. We would have to put a, we would have to put a a policy and a process in place.
When we, when you say we, are you talking about city, county or what?
We, we, if we're using our money, we would make the decision.
We would be making the decision. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else from the council?
To for clarity.
Okay.
Are we talking about just extending this order in to tomorrow evening and then for it to be discussed?
Well, what it's on the agenda for is to uh uh extend it to the fourteenth of April or until uh. Any other action is needed essentially. Is that correct, Joe?
Or unless sooner presented by the councils.
And then.
May then can we make this or we're just extending this order until tomorrow evening for it to be discussed so we have something in place? While we work through the particulars and work at that instead of applying it? Do we extend it that far out?
Well, then you you would have to uh take action to extend it again if you want it to stay in place tomorrow evening. Uh, this way it's in there unless you unless you change it. And so tomorrow evening, you could either amend it or reamend it or add anything to the standard.
Okay. Um, did if I may then? Could I make a, I guess, some form of of motion or even put this out there for discussion to extend this till Friday? With it to be discussed for amendment tomorrow evening at council? Would that, how does the council feel about that?
I I don't have a problem with it, uh, but like I said, it's already, it's already on there for the fourteenth of April and if we're going to, you know, that. That date can be amended tomorrow as well. I mean, we're, I I think, I think we're putting, I think we're putting.
This is that's three weeks out. And a lot can change, and I'm not saying that we wouldn't take action sooner, but I like the idea of us being proactive and leading. The discussion right now and being in charge of it than being reactionary because I'm I'm fearful that that's a lot of. Not just our actions at times, but that's a lot of the actions of the rest of the communities. Uh, in our country right now is that we're being reactionary, but we can help mitigate some of this issue that we're having right now.
Okay, I mean, I'll, I'm, I'm not pounding the table on any date in the future, so yeah.
Not either. I, to be clear, I'm putting this out there for the rest of us to discuss right now as well. This isn't me.
Okay, okay.
I'm going to argue it out with everybody. I I really just, these are my thoughts. I'm putting it out there so everyone else can share theirs as well.
Okay. So.
Okay. Um, Councilman Stevens, could you just summarize it in simple, simple terms, what you would like for us to be discussing at this moment? Thank you.
I'm, I'm, all I'm saying, if I may, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Is that. We're extending this order out till Friday, but we're also going to be discussing it tomorrow evening in a capacity that. Either allows us to expand it, limit it, remove it, add to it, wh- whenever we see fit. And my whole reasoning behind that is bluntly is that I think we need to be leading and having these discussions more often. And and that's why I'm saying it that way.
Yeah, do you understand it?
Pretty much.
Councilman Smith?
I'm unclear as to what difference there is between extending it to Friday or extending it to April fourteenth if we're going to discuss it tomorrow. With the idea of possibly keeping it, amending it, doing whatever we want to. What's the difference?
If I may, is that a question for me?
Yes, yes.
I think the difference is two weeks ago, this was an entirely different situation. Two days ago, this was an entirely different situation. So that's why I'm saying it this way to give our citizens a little bit of clarity and a little bit of a stopping point instead of three months, almost a month out. I think is a good decision right now.
Could we get the?
Yes, go ahead.
If 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 we, if we're just, if we're going for it to Friday, we might as well just take it to tomorrow night. And and the council extended for twenty-four hours. It must be done with it. And then meet tomorrow evening and come up with a a plan that's executable.
We'll have to do more than twenty-four if we're going to extend it to tomorrow night. Yeah, you'd have to do thirty-six or forty-eight.
Okay. Extend it to the till tomorrow at six o'clock.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Well, I was going to see if there's any uh anything the city manager, I'm sorry, the city attorney needs to chime in about. Us changing these dates and times. For our meeting.
Do you get that, Joe?
What was the question?
Uh, it's okay. Uh, do you have any comment or um? Anything legal that we need to know about extending these dates and times that are being requested to be amended?
Uh, no, I mean, both are are perfectly legal options for you to do.
Uh, within forty-eight hour, within forty-eight hours?
You can, you can do forty-eight hours, you can do two hours, you can do, you know, two months. It's it's entirely the council's project.
All right, thank you.
All right, one more time. Any, any more council comments before I open up to the public? All right. We have a lot of people here, so I'm sure someone wants to speak. All right, I see. Okay, would you?
Ma'am.
If you can avoid touching the microphone, it'd be great.
Uh, I'm Nicole Kalin with Subway. Um, one, I understand the concern health-wise. Um, thank you. Um, and I'm not against some of these measures. Um, as far as like the Walmart thing and all that stuff, that's not feasible. That will cause more riots. Uh, the police will be stretched even thinner than they are, so I I am against some of that. I believe. Walmart should be more uh proactive on sanitary for restaurants. For me, we have more hygiene. We are cleaner. We are, um, we take more actions for cleanliness and that stuff versus like Dollar General. And those kind of stores. So I believe that they should have more conditions for that. They should have more um hand sanitizers, wipes, all that stuff available. All their stuff should be wiped down, just like we would. Um. For me, we. We don't have drive-throughs, so I think for the businesses that don't have drive-throughs, the coffee house and stuff like that, it is more. Detrimental to us. Um, I just did a over a hundred thousand dollar remodel in McAllister. That will definitely hurt it. Um, for the gyms, the order that you guys are following are. Widespread is, I think it's what every city is doing. Um, but the gyms here, Valerie, Fazio, they're on a smaller level. They're not the big gyms like in Tulsa and Oklahoma City and New York City and all that stuff. And so I do. I do kind of find it unfair to put them into that situation. Um, because they don't have a carryout. They don't have it to go or anything like that. Um, and so I would. This affects all of us small business. Um. And so I hope that no decisions are made long term. I think it needs to be. Two-week basis. Um, and that we don't. Make decisions that would ruin a business. Um, because some of this will. Some people will not come out of this. Um, and so I do ask that we are reasonable with all businesses and that we think about. Some businesses that I'm on a small level, I can't hold that many people. When this all started, I took half my tables out. I put signs on every other table that that table was not able to be used. Um, but for me, I've lost, I'm down to a fourth of what I was doing in sales. And so I think for some of us, there should be extra tax breaks. There should be extra help for us. Um, because our sales taxes are what help support the community. And when you guys are cutting that, you're also going to be cutting. Some of the resources that you're going to be able to provide back to us or back to other businesses. But. I know they're not easy decisions to make. I think we do have to be proactive. We are not going to be able to stop. This from coming, but. We need to watch how we do things. Putting the mobile lab in a Walmart parking lot necessarily might not be a smart move. When you should isolate it out at the expo. Versus putting it where more social, we're trying to social distance, but we're collaborating everything into one. So just uh be mindful of everyone. I think of everyone. It's not just my business. I worry about every single one of us. Okay?
Thank you. Got, got to do another roll call quickly. Uh, Vice Mayor Stevens. Uh, Councilman Cox. Councilman Pritchard. Joe. Is there anyone else from the audience who would like to address? Alyssa, you had your hand up first.
I feel safe with my mask off up here. Um, I'm Alyssa Laddie with McAllister Main Street. Um, I just wanted to point out to our struggling businesses that we've kind of formed. A group between our organizations here in McAllister, between the local SBA, the chamber in us with Main Street. And to help guide businesses if they want to uh apply for the disaster relief loans. So if anybody is inquiring about that, just go ahead and get ahold of us and we'll walk you through all those steps.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, my name is Jason Fazio. I own the gym here in town, Fazio's Fitness. Uh, I'm here to fight for my business. It's the spring. This time of year, I make a large chunk of my operating money that gets me through the year. It's tanning season. We have tanning beds. March, April, and May are my biggest months. Um, I've already seen a decrease in money. From the tanning beds because of this virus. But I'm getting some much-needed income nonetheless. If we close, I'm going to get nothing. I took over the gym about two years ago. Dave Larson ran a good business for many years. Um, but in twenty sixteen, he took a job at the base and by his own admission, the gym was neglected. I had to work my butt off to get that place. Running efficiently. Uh, anyone who's ever run their own business knows. There are lots of startups and upfront costs. I had to dig myself out of a hole. It's taken me this long to get to a place I feel relatively comfortable. I didn't pay cash for that place. I've got hefty bank payments to make, and as any small business owner knows, I'm taxed to death. If I lose a month or two or three. It would place a tremendous burden on me and all that I've worked for. I need to be open as long as I can to hopefully ride this thing out. And when it does actually come to our area, because as of right now, it has not impacted our area. I'm asking for the opportunity to remain open. I don't care if it's just a short-term trial period. I don't care if the city wants to come in and do periodic inspections. I don't care what you have to do. I just want a chance. The city of Owasso is currently doing some of the same things I'll bring up today. They're allowing their small businesses the opportunity to remain open while remaining compliant with CDC guidelines. Gyms are currently open in the city of Owasso. Uh, we will be rearranging our operating hours and the way we do business. If told we can remain open, we will be suspending the twenty-four hour access until this is over. Our gym will be staffed. During all operating hours to oversee that the CDC guidelines are being followed. Due to the size of our facility, we would ask that we could have a ten and ten policy, ten on the east end of the building, ten on the west. But we would be more than willing to limit it to the ten total if that helps us remain open and do workouts by appointment. Uh, we would make sure members keep their distance from one another. We're looking at scanning foreheads to check temperatures before our members enter. We're looking at booking appointment times to schedule workouts on one-hour blocks. We will also require all members to sanitize their hands upon entering the facility. We're actually already doing some of these things as we speak. Our members are already doing an excellent job of wiping down equipment with our spray bottles of alcohol solution that we have placed all throughout the gym. But we would be even more rigid and hawkish in ensuring that equipment is constantly sanitized after use. I would also like to add that the people who exercise regularly are generally healthier people. There's a direct correlation between. Strength training, cardiovascular training, and a strengthened immune system, so our members are generally healthy people. We're a members-only club. Only a certain number of people frequent our facility. Contrast that with Walmart. Thousands of people walk through their doors every day, especially now with the hoarding and shortages going on. Who's wiping down the buggies? Who's wiping down the products that these people touch? How closely are these people standing in line together for extended periods while they wait to check out? It's my belief that all your efforts in closing down restaurants and fitness centers to minimize the spread of this virus are completely canceled out by allowing retail stores and grocery stores like Walmart to remain open. We all go to Walmart. We don't all go to Fazio's Fitness. Uh, case in point, a Norman grocery store employee tested positive yesterday. If we can remain open, I understand that circumstances may change and your job is to make adjustments in light of new evidence. But currently, there are zero cases in McAllister, zero cases in Pittsburgh County, and zero cases in southeastern Oklahoma. All I'm asking for is the opportunity to remain open so I can continue providing this service that is important to so many people who feel as though they don't have anywhere else to go or anything else to do right now. Fitness and exercise is a way of life for some people. It's an outlet for people. When I was a kid, my father worked out at the gym on Carl Albert. Some of you guys might remember it. It's where those new bronze is at. Every day he went there when he got off work. That was his time to unwind and decompress. As an adult, I can understand that now. Along with the health benefits, it relieves anxiety and stress and has many therapeutic effects. Those things sure can be helpful for so many people at this particular moment in our country. I appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Come on up.
Hi, my name is Valerie Walton. I own Signature Fitness. Within the mandate, I do personal training and only personal training. The large, the only number of people that I have up my, on my studio at one given time, worst-case scenario, is eight people. I own 5,000 square foot and per square foot, you're talking about, oh, we'll say roughly 83 square foot per person. We're already under the mandate. I don't understand why, oh, I'm sorry. I also have two roller doors on each side of my building, which allows me to have free flow of air. Again, I know we keep, uh, beating up on Walmart, but it's, it's right there. Walmart can't even say that. I have free-flow ventilation. The reason the building was built that way in the first place was for health and safety. Everything in my building, and you can come in, and I would love you to do that, and come in, is clean. We wipe everything down. It's just, it's, it's just SOP. And so I don't understand. Every day, my clients are texting me because they're concerned. It's their only outlet. The people at my gym, just like, of course, just like Fazio, it's, we're all healthy. It's all about gut, gut, uh, gut health. You have to have something. We just need a little bit of normal. And to take all that away, we're creating panic. And so I'm, I'm just concerned about that. Like I said, I'm a personal training. I don't have small groups. We have automatic check-in. I know exactly who's coming through my door in every hour on the hour. I am the trainer. And so to shut me down, I've worked very, very hard for my business and to shut me down, and I'm already under the mandate, it's my business model. I just think is unfair. And I know everybody, we have to be diligent. I get that. But I'm already there. And so if we could just do things, just a little, have a plan before we just shut everything down willy-nilly before we know what we're going to do. I just ask that we have some sort of plan, but that's what it is. You, I know, like I said, keep saying Walmart, 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 but that is the case. We also have the Easy Mart's. I mean, if, if you have the Easy Mart's, if you have people coming in from 69, we're not closing 69, we're not closing 270. We're not doing that. And so is there any way that we can come together to just add a little bit of normal in McAllister? Just a little bit, so that we don't so much panic. I mean, it's not here yet. Yes, I get it, that it's going to be. Or maybe it's here, we don't know. But it, can someone just put a little hand out for just a little bit of normal? I have things in place. I, of course, I'm gonna have a Plan B, Plan C and everything. But if I don't have to implement Plan, Plan B, Plan C, all the way to Z, I don't want to. I'll be honest with that. I don't want to. I know nothing's fair. I get that. I understand that. I know that, uh, owning a, uh, personal training facility was my choice. I get that. But at the end of the day, I also worked for that. And I, for some strange reason, I'm having problems with, and, and I apologize for this, but I like to be responsible for my successes and my failures. And so if I lose my business, I don't have, I have no control over that. And, you know, and so I'm just asking, when you make a decision, can you please think about that? Because a lot of us put our hearts and souls into things, and this isn't about money. By any means, this isn't about money at all. And I know there's, you, there's not a such thing as right and wrong, and you can't be fair across the board. But can we please look at the community as a whole? And if there's anything that we can do to cut down on just a little bit of this panic and just bring a little bit of normal, is it possible to do that? Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm Doug Marchant, owner of the Valley and Properties on South Main. We've got a motel, RV park, and, um, a bar. And Mr. Mayor, I want to apologize to you, uh, for the late-night phone call that you got for me. I'm sorry about that. So anyway, uh, yeah, we want a sense of normal down there too. You know, we're not a health facility. But we have a, a large following of people that come to our bar. Uh, this doesn't affect, as of right now, the RV park and the, uh, and the motel. But to have the ability to, um, still have people come in, enjoy a drink, uh, some socialization. We can still, uh, take bar stools out. We can separate folks. We can limit it to 10. Uh, those are all things that we can do. We can have the same sanitizing wipes and sanitizers and soap in the bathrooms and, and do everything possible to create a safe and clean environment for folks to, to, uh, come out and at least attempt to have a little bit of normalcy. Uh, so we're asking for the same opportunity, uh, just like the gyms and other businesses, restaurants that may not be able to do curbside or a drive-through, uh, to, uh, still operate. You know, our bar generates a substantial amount of our income. And, uh, to completely shut it down is gonna be hugely detrimental to our business, to our ability to pay bills, to ability to feed our families and the whole nine yards. So, uh, I want you guys to please take that in consideration. Thank you.
Anyone else? Is there a motion from the council? Well, I will, I will move that we extend the, uh, the existing order through, uh, tomorrow evening at 6 o'clock and, uh, bring it up on the, uh, uh, new business and discuss it further to see if we can come up with some, some actual methods to implement some of the things that have been discussed today as opposed to just enacting.
I'll second that.
Councilman Brown seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Mayor, I would recommend that you don't make that until 8 o'clock tomorrow evening. Based to the longevity of the meeting tomorrow night, 8 or 9 o'clock tomorrow night is what I would.
Okay, yeah. Well, let's, 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 let's go with, uh, 8 o'clock tomorrow instead of, uh, 6. And we have, we had, we had a second, Councilman Brown seconded. Is there any further discussion? Corrigan, call it all, please.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Stevens?
Vice Mayor Stevens, did you hear? Uh, she's calling.
I can't, I can't hear. I apologize.
I'm sorry, did you get, did you get the motion and the second?
Yes, I did.
Okay, yes. Yes, she just called you.
Okay, yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Preacher?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. That is the only, yes?
Mayor, do you, I couldn't hear the votes. What was the vote on the motion?
It was 6, 6-1. Uh, Council, Councilman Smith, the voted no. You're welcome. That being the only item of business that we had, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So, Mayor.
Motion, Councilman Brown seconded. Councilman Smith, any discussion? Corrigan, you call it all, please.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stevens? Cox?
Councilman Cox?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Preacher?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, we were adjourned. Thank you, guys. I'm hanging up.
Thank you, everyone.